On their way, we want to recognize them tonight too. So we're gonna sit tight here for just about five minutes, okay? Have everyone here at the board meeting. First, I would like to excuse Superintendent Paul Swett, who's at an event tonight, and also Board Member Tom Hanson, who's out of town tonight as well. But let's start, we'd like to start with a first, a little member roll call, roll call here, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Marian B. Allen, Board Member.
Corey Holmes, Board Member.
Tyler Bluth, Board President.
Kim Dickerson, Board Vice President.
Jason Watt, Business Administrator.
Thank you. And then Kim, would you help us with the?
Yeah, of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do think, we want to start with celebrations tonight, is that be okay to start with that? Yeah, so we're excited tonight to have a little recognition of some great things Wasatch High School has done, and we'd like to start with, we'd like to turn the time over to Lana and announce what's going on here. Tell us all about it.
Okay, so I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize our cheerleaders. And just a little background, this team has worked so hard, it's been so fun watching them the last three years grow into the people that they are and the cheerleaders that they are. And I don't think a lot of us realize the work they put in. I feel like they're at the school more than I am, that's a lot. And then they compete on the weekends. So not only do they do all of the weeknight activities, but then they spend their weekends competing and winning. We had a cool moment at state basketball, our whole fan base, we're chanting "State Champs" for our cheerleaders. And it's awesome that everywhere we go, the kids and the fans in the stands are always like, number one, number one, like they're always recognizing our cheerleaders. And they're very proud. When that banner dropped last week at our, was that last week at our assembly? I don't even remember days anymore. Anyway, it was really cool, like everyone had chills, it was awesome to see the banner dropped during our election assembly. It's just a really cool moment for our school. So I'm gonna actually turn the time over to.
Lana, will you explain a little bit what goes into, what is the competition for the layperson that doesn't know? What do you have to do with the?
Yes, well, it's a sanctioned sport now, and I'm actually gonna have Tasha and Christina speak to it a little bit more of the efforts that are put into that. But we have been sanctioned for two years now, is that right? Yes. And that being said, we're recognized as a competitive sport, and so it's kind of this shift of now, we do all these sideline cheers, right, and then we also have a competitive team that goes and competes. So we kind of have two separate things going on, even though they mesh. I am gonna turn the time over to Christina and Tasha, the coaches, and I'm gonna let them speak a little bit to this and what it means to be a sanctioned sport.
Okay, so just kind of talking about what it means to be a sanctioned sport, it wasn't too long ago that I was in here proposing to President Shoemaker to get stunting back. And since then, our sport in Wasatch has come so far to being a grounded team of cheerleaders who were not able to stunt, to getting stunting progressing so far to where now we are able to compete against some of the best schools in the state and win. And part of our sport at the competitive level is to, we have a game day routine, two game day routines, right, of sideline dance, and it's more of like a band chant and sideline cheer, and that makes up our game day material. And then we have our show cheer routine, which is stunting and tumbling and jumps, and all that goes into that. So we've come a long ways to be able to be able to compete in that show cheer routine. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
This year, we were a coed team, so meaning we had girls and boys on our team. And so we competed against other 5A schools for the state. We also competed against just other schools at other competitions that are not for the state and at Nationals. This year at Nationals, they took third for our show cheer routine in coed, and then they also took third in Fight Song.
Where was Nationals?
Nationals was in Anaheim, California. The top three teams that placed were a Florida team that was like their state champions, and then another team was a California that was a state champion. So it was really cool that they got to be at that level and compete with some of the best in the country. So it was really, really cool for them.
Why is our team good?
Because they have the passion for it. Why?
Yeah, I think, well, Tasha said, we have the passion for it. One thing that makes our program unique is that all six of the coaches were all Wasatch alumni, which I think is something really special that Wasatch has, is that we instill in our athletes and our students this passion that makes us want to come back to Wasatch. And I just feel honored that I've been able to be in a position to give back to Wasatch and help, you know, instill the same passion into our athletes. And I think that's kind of what sets us apart.
I hope we get to pass it on to these guys, and years down the road, you guys will be the next coaches and get to pass on the knowledge you guys have learned, and so, yeah.
So I want to comment. So my daughter cheered, her first year was 2012, maybe? And it was Trish's first year of coaching, the first round, and Carrie was there, and I see some familiar faces out there. And to watch this program grow to where it is now is amazing. That was the first year they started, because you fought to get stunting back, and they got to stunt. And so I'm just so proud of this group and and our amazing coaches, and I'm sad to hear that you're leaving. So thank you for all that you have done. And just as a former cheer mom, just thank you, and congratulations, girls and guys, yeah, good job.
Thank you. Now, we just feel honored to be part of this and to be able to, you know, have athletes that are so passionate and work so hard. So, thank you. We had three boys this year, and they were, it was their first year, and you would have never known it, they were amazing. So we are hoping that that tradition continues, and we can involve more boys as the years go on and it grows.
Any cheerleaders moving on with scholarships, college, the next step?
So we have one cheerleader that's part of the University of Utah's cheer team this year. Can speak to the boys.
They haven't really had their tryouts yet, it's kind of, college is still wrapping up their seasons, and so we have a couple that are looking into it. We have a bunch going on missions and different opportunities, so.
But this is a program that has had girls move on to college cheer.
Yeah, yeah, we have had a lot, and I think once the season, college season kind of wraps up, we have some athletes that are interested, and we'll see where they go.
Nice. Well, congrats, that's awesome.
Congratulations.
Do we, we want to do any picture?
Yeah, let's do a picture, for sure.
Picture with you guys up here in front. Yeah, if we could just hear from the cheer captain, kind of tell us, tell us about yourself.
My name is Emma Engelbreit. I'm Lindsay Smith. And we were just so grateful for this year, like, all of us talk about it, we couldn't have asked for a better program, a better experience. And every win, every lose, like, we truly do feel like a family, and I think that's what's so special about our program is it's a home away from home. We all just feel like siblings, and we all love each other so much. Our theme this year was "Come Together", and, you know, we had to overcome a lot of things this year, but that theme really stuck with us. And I feel like we've all grown as a team and as individuals to become better women and men, and it's just been a great experience for all of us.
We're all best friends, and we're both leaving this year, we're seniors, and we're so sad to leave everyone, but we're gonna come back, build a alumni program, you know, and it's been fun.
Well, and Emma, your sister, tell your sister cheered.
Oh, yeah, my sister cheered like eight years ago, six years, seven years ago, and yeah, she moved on and cheered at Snow. And seeing her example and her experience with the program too really inspired me to join the program also, yeah.
Well, thanks, girl.
Thanks.
Sure, please. Take the pulpit.
Come on, take the podium.
I just want to give a shout out to Tasha and Christina. They are a huge reason why we are state champions. They've worked with a lot of these girls since they were six years old, and they brought them up into this cheer program. And they're just amazing, and we are going to miss them incredibly. I know, the thing that's so great about them is they have such a passion and a love for cheer, that I know that they're huge supporters. I know that they are going to come in with this new coach, and they're going to help with things as far as stunting and keeping them at the level that they are used to being at. And that's what's so great about them, is to have coaches who are stepping down, but that are still, have such a love for the program that they are wanting to stay involved and keep these girls where they are. And I think that just tells a lot for the cheer program that we have built at Wasatch High School. So, thank you.
Why don't we just turn the time over to, could you address the Sterling Scholars as well?
Lucky you guys, right? Here I am again. So we, actually, I love the way that Stephen has done the Sterling Scholars, and it's quite a process, and he can tell you all about it. But the cool thing is, is these students, and again, these are probably our most involved students, just to give you a little bit of preface here. We have 12 different activities going on tonight, all the way from like pacing to boys lacrosse to softball at home. And so, yeah, these are our most involved students as well. So it's kind of like a two-part thing. But Stephen's gonna talk about it, and what's really cool about this is our departments take this really seriously, and our students work so hard to earn this award. I know it's something that the students look forward to, and same with the teachers. They love to see the hard work of these students pay off. A lot of these students have worked in their areas their entire life to become experts. And they deserve this award and so much more for their hard work and efforts. So I'd like to turn the time over to Stephen. He, again, has done an amazing job with this, and let him talk to you a little about it, and then we're gonna hear from a student.
Okay, excuse me. Yeah, these are, these Sterling Scholar students represent the best of Wasatch High School. They are so involved, they are driven individuals, they are talented individuals. They are service-minded, community-minded, academically oriented, and just very successful. And we are very proud of their accomplishments individually. The fact that we had, within our region, out of 16 categories, we had four winners and eight runners-up, that speaks to the, again, the talent and experience of these students, but also, I think, is a reflection of the committed faculty we have at the high school, the amazing programs, the fantastic mentoring that happens for these students, and the opportunities that they take advantage of, everything from CAPS to our performing arts programs. So we are really proud of them. To become a Sterling Scholar, they had to submit a portfolio, including essays and pictures and documentation of a lot of the things that they've accomplished. And then our faculty teams evaluate those portfolios, and we take their recommendations for who is selected to represent Wasatch at our region competition. And then those students have to do a little bit more, and we go through and help them polish their portfolios. My coadviser is Jake Hinman, and we make them feel really bad about their writing, but we help them make it a lot better. And then they go and they interview, and they, in certain cases, they perform for judges, and then, and so it was awesome to have so many recognized at the regional level. Can you introduce Wayland Geis? He was our Computer Technology Sterling Scholar, and maybe he can tell you about the experience.
Yeah, I'm Wayland, and I do stuff with computers. So Sterling's honor was incredible. We had to go down to UVU for a day, and then we had our interview time slot, so if yours was a little later, you basically just spent all day stressing until it. And then you just went, and it was a panel of three judges, and they just pretty much asked you whatever they wanted to. Generally, it was stuff with your portfolio category, but, I mean, I heard some questions after interviews, like you to be prepared for anything. They would just ask you anything. So it was pretty stressful, but I think it was really great. And I just want to say I appreciate, like, Wasatch High School, I think we might have been the other, the only school that had one in every category show up. And I mean, other schools may not be as big as we are that are in our region. But I think the competitiveness that leads to selecting just our school-level Sterling Scholars is the reason we managed to do so well, is because so many people are interested in becoming a Sterling Scholar. We really select the best, as opposed to schools that are, you know, maybe there's only one person who even really wants to be the Sterling Scholar. So I just want to, you know, say thank you for having such a great Sterling Scholar program here.
Wayland, don't leave. Tell us, I know you're involved in the school. Tell us some things, the activities that you've been involved in the last years.
Oh, well, I actually had to leave a water polo practice early to be here. That's probably the first thing. I've also been involved in our AFJRC program, our marching band. AFJRC, like, yeah, JRC. I said it fast. Anyway, and then marching band, jazz band, all types of band. That's pretty much it. I mean, I don't really do that much.
What do you want to do next? What's your plans?
So I got accepted into the United States Host Art Academy, or in New London, Connecticut, where I'll be pursuing cyber systems.
That's awesome, that's really hard to get into. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Steve, that you've, that are here, Lana, is anybody else here?
Sorry, we have all these kids, like I told you, are involved in activities or sports, and Tuesdays and Thursdays are our heaviest nights.
Did you maybe just announce the names of the?
Sure, so they're up here. Yeah, if you want to look at them, I can announce them as well, but. Okay, yep, they are right there. And again, as Stephen said, I just want, and Wayland touched on this as well, our teachers and our faculty take this process very seriously, and at the end of the day, it prepares our students for the future, and that's really what we want to do. You'll find a lot of teachers that are in these content areas, spending their weekends and nights helping students with their portfolios. So credit to them as well. And Wayland, I was just gonna make the comment, when you're ready for those questions like that, you're ready to defend a dissertation someday too. I have no doubt you'll be doing that someday.
And I think you're getting oranges in soon, right? Did the water polo, yeah?
Or polo fundraiser, as always.
Water polo fundraiser, oranges. I ordered some.
We have a ball, ROTC ball Friday night. My wife and I are excited to attend.
Yay, thank you.
Congrats to all of you guys.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, it's an exciting day always for the high school. We love it. It's great. Good job, these kids too.
Great, thank you. Well, you're welcome to stay at our meeting if you're not, it's lots of fun, or go do something fun.
Credit for government classes, come on.
No, I've been to their recognition. I went to the recognition night.
Yeah, but thank you for responding.
That's, this is all that's left.
You ready?
We'd like to recognize you.
It's recognized, yeah, Tom Stone. Tom Stone has entered the building.
Well, I guess let's move on. Let's into public comment. And let's start, is there some online comments that we have had, that we were addressing the fee schedule to start with? Any online, anything? Okay. All right, then let's close that part of the.
Is there anyone here that wants to make a public comment?
This will be the next step. I gotta close it and then reopen it for public comment, correct? So we're gonna open this up now for public comment, and you have time to address us. Anyone? Anyone?
See how exciting this is, Tom?
Okay, if not, let's, we'll move on, we'll close public comment. And move into consideration of consent items.
I move that we approve consent items as outlined.
Second.
Any comments there? All in favor?
Aye.
Bases. Okay, we'll move now into, anything else there? Move into, Zach, your front center action items, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I have before you here our bids for asphalt maintenance for fiscal year '25, so this coming summer. This is for slurry seal on the parking lots and playgrounds at Heber Valley, slurry seal on the entire south side of the high school, and some patch work at JR Smith after we do the grease trap, there'll be a piece to patch there. So we had three bids come in. Morgan pavement was the low bid at eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. So it's my recommendation that the board accept the bid for Morgan pavement for eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious how, is there an increase in cost as the years go by?
Actually went down this year. I had a hundred and five budgeted for this, so we did good. Under budget, just, it's what I learned, right? And actually, actually, part of this is included in the grease trap money from last year, because we'll have to patch that asphalt, but that was included in. So it really came in under budget.
So where are we? Do we have others that aren't covered under this that we'll do in next year, or we, this is pretty?
No, this gets everything, we're on a schedule, every, every year we do two or three properties, so next year it'll be a similar amount.
So last, last board meeting, you guys passed the master list, and then as they, as they, those projects bid, those will come in individually for you to. Gotcha.
And then probably in September, I'll bring crack seal, which is the other part of our asphalt maintenance. So anywhere that doesn't get slurry sealed, gets all the cracks sealed with tar, so.
Have you worked, go ahead, Mary Ann. Have you worked with Morgan before?
Yes, many times.
Where are they at?
Orem.
Yeah, Orem.
Very good to work with. We've actually worked with all three of these companies, but...
And that was the question that I get sometimes, like, oh, well, you're saving money, but are you, like, is... But I, maybe explain the RFP process, that they're all bidding on this, to do the same.
They are, yep. So, we, we put out a spec. We, Stacy Fredsgard draws up the plans. She outlines on Google Maps exactly where they're gonna be slurring. Um, we have a spec for the type of slurry we want put on it, so they all have to bid the same thing. The square footages are there. It's a, it's a really simple bid process for them, so.
We're just lucky that we get them under budget, so.
Yeah, I was surprised this year. Oil's one of those things that's really hard to outguess, so.
Yeah.
Let's pass this thing. All, it's, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nice work, thank you.
Exactly. Motion passes. Brother Sean Kelly.
So, tonight I'm here to present the URS Retirement Fund. That all brand-new employees will have a five percent of their own funds put in their 401K. They will have the opportunity to, uh, opt out of that through a signature. And we talked about this in study session, and my recommendation tonight is to pass this as-is because it'll only affect new employees, and they will have a one-on-one with me.
And you'll discuss everything with them?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're good. Passes. Thanks. Uh, next, number three.
So, the new high school land has a couple of canals that run by it. Tonight I'm here to get a, approval to alter by putting precast, uh, what's the word, bridges over the Sage Creek Canal. So, this is not a rerouting of the canal, but we have to have a, a contract showing that we're putting in the precast culverts, if you will, and it will affect the canal slightly by putting in these actual precast, uh, I'm, I'm missing the word, the precast bridges that will go under the road on Sixth West, which is gonna be on the east side of the property. So, on the Sixth West Street, if you dri- have driven by there, Sage Creek Canal is what we're talking about. And again, this is just to put in those precast concrete, uh, bridges to go under the road. So, the, the contract is, is pretty standard for something like this. Uh, my recommendation tonight is that you approve the contract to put in these precast as per the plan for the new school.
Take a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion there before we move on?
No, I appreciate, I mean, people can look online, but I appreciate, I appreciated the exhibits included so that I could understand what was going on. And talking with it and seeing where it's going.
How's everything going down the street? How's, how's it looking?
It's going remarkably well. Uh, we've had a good winter, favorable conditions. Uh, they were able to work almost every day. There were some days where cost effectiveness limited them, and they just shut down, but very few days. So, we're ahead of schedule. Uh...
Are we under budget?
Knock on something.
We're on budget, just as...
Under budget.
Yes. Yeah, we're...
We're gonna put Zach in charge of this.
He, he's there with me every day. Every day he's there with me. So, I will tell you, Westland, Curtis Minor, the whole team down there is doing a really good job. Our superintendent for this job, there's two of them, they're very good. Our project managers are on top of it today. We had a little issue with some things on the road, and in ten minutes they had it fixed. Uh, it's a great product. We have great subs. There's very few problems considering the size and area that we're dealing with. So, things are going well down there. You're gonna see, as soon as the sun comes out, it'll really start to move. The, the, the PE facility is just getting the foundation completed. As soon as that's completed, they'll pour a slab and they'll start blocking on that area as well.
The high part, looks like it's the stage.
The high part is the, this auditorium stage, the fly system. You probably don't know this from the road, but there is roofing, decking on parts of the, the school. Probably twenty percent of the schools actually have decking and roofing material on it.
I can't wait till we can start touring it again.
Yeah, it's a little muddy right now. I wouldn't suggest, let's give it a few, but you're gonna be really surprised the next time you go down there because they have really made some progress, a lot.
Sean, M-Tech's not gonna start their building for another year, is that...
So, they're in the process right now of awarding the contract for the architect and the general. I'm not sure they have done that, but they are down that process. I think they will start this summer. They're about a two-year build, so they're about, it doesn't take them quite as long. But they will start this summer is my understanding. And I don't think they've awarded the contract yet, have they, the last we heard? We know that Westland and Curtis Minor did not get the contract, which is unfortunate. Well, at least Curtis Minor. It's still, Westland still has an outside chance, but they're not very hopeful.
I think they're anticipating now to open at the same time we do. Awesome.
Hey, thank you.
Sean, appreciate it.
Opening the same time we do now.
Jay Watt.
So, the next item on the agenda is a, uh, is a consideration to approve the purchase contract of, um, sale of some of the property connected to this school, and it's kinda in between us and, um, M-Tech. Now that we know exactly where the footprints are and what their, their plans are, um, Jared Anderson's been working on this a lot, uh, with, uh, with M-Tech and with our, um, engineers on where the lines be, and we've been able to kinda parcel out now how much of our land they're going to be using. And so, this contract is for the purchase, for them to purchase from us three point nine five acres of property. Um, purchase price, in this case, is five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And so, um, that's, this is the purchase contract. Again, this is a little, um, there's parts, parts of, uh, parts of this, we've, we've worked with them for, for some time on, on, on helping them to be able to, um, they, they really like some, some district participation, the legislators do, in, in, um, in helping them to get a building approved and built quick. And so, this is part of those negotiations and, and ways that, that, um, we're gonna be able to, to, uh, interact with them. And so, in addition to this, they'll also be participating in the cost of some of the roads that are between us and go in front of us. And so, there'll be, there'll be more participation from them on the project. This is just for the, the land, the, the land. So, the recommendation is to approve this contract.
Okay, entertain a motion.
So, I can stay in good standing with, uh, Mr. John Moss. I would like to make a motion that we approve the purchase agreement with M-Tech as described by Mr. Jason Watt.
Second.
Any discussion there before we go on? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, is that it? Everything, items? Um, moving into board report, just, uh, as, uh, for next week, or when is it, fourth and the fifth? We are headed to New Orleans as, as a group, and we're, got some plans there to, with the national convention. Uh, and we also use it as an opportunity to get together and discuss a lot of our goals and future plans. Uh, so I'm looking forward to it. It'd be a good opportunity. Anything else from you guys?
When do we fly out?
Thursday.
Thursday, the... I know it's Thursday, but I can't remember when.
Eleven thirty? Eleven, eleven thirty?
I haven't checked my, 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 I...
I was just gonna say we had our regional USBA dinner. We, uh, had a lot of conversations and, and got some good things going, and, and we'll be, as we've moved our delegate assembly, we'll be setting JLC priorities, the joint legislative priorities, starting in April. So, no time off in terms coming, and then delegate assembly is gonna be early June, so. And then, I am also on the executive committee of USBA now. I got elected to that. I did not share that with you. Paul encouraged me to share that with you.
Well, thank you.
Um, so, we're moving forward with USBA. If you need anything.
How do you feel, everything went on the hill this, uh, session? What's your overall feeling, Mary Ann?
It was a rough go. Five hundred and ninety-one bills, almost the most ever in the state of Utah. Um, and I believe we are over a hundred education bills. And, uh, as our administrators nod their heads and I say I apologize because we have to adjust and change and add to everyone's job every time one of those bills is passed, and, and we will continue to work with our legislature and ask that they take our input as much as possible to better outcomes for our students, 'cause that's why we're all doing it, and try and get the experts up there in education, the ones with masters and PhDs and teaching on the ground every day, because what you believe and say matters. And so, as a school board member, as school board members, we support you, and I want you guys to know that. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you for you. Appreciate it.
Mary Ann and I are excited to attend our inter-local meeting.
Our inter-local pla- regional planning meeting.
Yeah, here in, uh...
Couple of weeks, right?
It's, yeah, like the Wednesday or Thursday of the following week.
Yeah.
After, uh...
After New Orleans.
Yeah.
God bless you.
And I'm excited to attend the ROTC ball on Friday.
Thank you for going, yeah.
Thank you for going. I really do wanna go to that someday. I just am always out of town every time they have a dinner.
We're loving to go, I don't...
I'm out of town, though, like, I have a family reunion, so.
Well, I've just been playing in the schools, dancing around with Cat in the Hat, hanging out at Old Mill, you know, different schools.
She's been doing awesome stuff with WPN, Spelling Bee, all the things, so.
I can say that Old Mill still rocks stuff.
Been busy.
Great, awesome. Anything else? Jason?
Nope.
Stace? Okay. Well, if not, thanks a lot for coming, and, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting. Appreciate it.
You can adjourn.